Council time together here for Wednesday, November 10. And we will, are we recording? Get that, okay, thank you. So we will begin with all business in the minutes for the October 27th meeting. Entertained a motion, please.
Motion to approve, Madam Chair.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the October 27th meeting. Go in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
And a motion passes. No new business? Okay, a counselor reports, please. We have any counsel reports?
I do.
Counselor Mevige.
So. Few topics. I wanted to either request for a work session. Or set, or just a council time discussion. After meeting once again with the Friends of Lake Vancouver this past week. You know, they, they were hopeful for an update on the $150,000 earmark that we received from the legislature. I don't know when that money first became available, but it is November and it was from last session. You know, they have another infestation there of weed, noxious weed. And they've also contracted to have a full study of the lake to try to address a way ahead. In the past, we had, when we first were dealing with milfoil, we were told that there basically was put together another regional group of all the stakeholders to guard the health of Lake Vancouver and prove it. It needs more than guarding, it needs dramatic improvement. But I understand that that really has not taken hold, whether it's because of the pandemic or not, that there's really been no forward steps in having all the stakeholders meet about Lake Vancouver. So I was hopeful that we could have and spend some time soon and get an update. I understand, and I, on our one-on-one, I know you were out of state at the time, Chair. Kathleen was going to call Ecology or DNR to see what the update was on, on them becoming a lead or, or dealing with that $150,000. But, you know, that's only one aspect. The other part of it is whether we become a sponsor for Corps of Engineer work or other possible granting agencies or both at the federal and state level. What, what our obligations may be, whether it's something we should take a lead on, because I certainly would like to become a lead and get some work done, not only for Lake Vancouver, but for Lackamasue Lake. But the topic is Lake Vancouver at this point. So I just wanted to talk about that meeting that I had with the Friends of Lake Vancouver again. They've certainly won my heart and mind that we need action now. We do have this earmark sitting there. I hopefully don't want it to languish for much longer. Thank you.
So do I under, understand you just were reporting on that meeting or you wanted to have another work session or something on it?
Well, I was trying to link what I was reporting on and asking that we should address it as a council, either at a council discussion or a work session specifically on this, the two issues, the sponsorship issue. What does that entail? Is it something we should fear? Is it something we should grab hold of? And then also the $150,000 that the state legislature granted to us.
Okay, I, I do understand. I, I would be very interested to find out as well about, well, both things. But I, I'd like to find out what kind of responsibilities would come to the county if we were to quote unquote sponsor and what does that mean? And how far does that go? Does it just allow us to ask for things or receive money and do things? Or does it give us the responsibility then to, to, to be the, the go-to jurisdiction that takes care of the lake? And that may be, that may be a bigger bite than we want to actually take. But knowing the difference between maybe being a lead, a lead jurisdiction versus a responsible jurisdiction, if we can, I think it would be good to actually know the answer to that. So it probably is worth discussion anyway at a council time. If not, yeah, I don't think we're prepared today, but, but at a soon future council time.
Chair, Brian, this is Kathleen, if I can just chime in really quick. So I have mentioned to the council, and I did mention it to Counselor Mevige earlier this week as well, I am reaching out to DNR because DNR and Ecology both have the jurisdiction over the lake. And the, once I get ahold of them, then the goal was to bring the key stakeholders to the table to talk about what the history is on and what possible next steps are, at which time the council has previously approved, I believe Counselor Mevige, to join that meeting. I personally would like DNR to take the lead on the efforts as it is in their jurisdiction and that the county could certainly partner and help in any way we can for a couple of reasons. One is the jurisdiction authority. And the second is we do have some fairly new staff and some turnover in public works and they don't have the capacity to take a full lead on this project, but we certainly want to partner to help provide for a solution. So my recommendation is to allow that first initial meeting to happen, to get the history, to get the jurisdictions, to get the lead, all that figured out, and then have a report back to the council on what the potential next steps or commitment is with the county.
Kathleen, would it be helpful if, for instance, the council signed a letter to those individuals to invite them to a discussion? I don't know how to, you know, sort of get them off the plate to, to engage with us. That, that'd be the problem.
Yeah, and I know Senator Cleveland had already had conversations as well with DNR and Ecology. So let me connect with them first. I'm hopeful that they will come to the table and talk. I don't know for sure if they want to take the lead. Another reason why it's imperative that they're there is, you know, as a state agency, they do have a lot more resources available as well to help with this, this project. And, and then we can talk to the other jurisdictions here locally that also don't have jurisdiction over the lake that may want to contribute and be a partner in the solution.
Great, thank you. Other counselor reports?
If I may, very, very briefly.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Because there's nothing, no place on the agenda to actually address this. But, you know, this, this, tomorrow is Veterans Day, and so I did want to thank all veterans for their service. And, and in that regard, mention Native American Heritage Month, which is this month. And, you know, we had over 29 Medal of Honor recipients from the First Nation, from, from Native American service members. And so I did want to give a shout out, if you will, to all veterans and hopefully people will participate and support veterans on Veterans Day. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Mevige. Noted. And yes, agreed, ditto. Thank you. Counselor Berman, were you wanting to give a, okay, all right, thank you. Counselor Olson, do you have anything?
I do not.
Okay, okay, thank you. Lynn's work session reports, anything?
There are no work session reports this morning.
Okay. And anything on the policy issues, Lindsay?
Yes, a couple of things for you this morning. Two quick updates and then two items for your discussion. First update, the Clark County Transportation Alliance has prepared their 2022 priorities. I sent that out and we've scheduled a council time discussion for that next week to see if the county wants to support their priorities. Broadband, I know of at least four applications that have gone to the state broadband office by their deadline. All four of them were approved beyond the pre-application phase. And so their application is, then the full application is due by November 30th, so I'm working with them. I did send out two requests for letters of support and we'll talk about that in one-on-ones on Monday and then a full council discussion and council time next week. But if you have any immediate questions, email me anytime. The legislature, so in getting ready for our November 30th delegation meeting, of course, looking at the results of the, the sales tax proposition, what Josh and I have proposed on our handout, our legislative delegation asks, if you will, is to have a statement in there saying, we support, you know, the legislature being involved in ensuring that body cams can come to local governments, to local law enforcement agencies, and we want to be part of the conversation. I think that from what I have heard in my discussions with counselors, that there's a desire to make sure that we are part of those conversations, but making it a full legislative ask is not something that, there's a majority support for the council. But I wanted to bring it up in council time and allow you to have a discussion to see if that meets with what you would like to do.
So we'll have that in, in a future council time?
No, I, we'd like to get out the handouts to everybody next week so that they're not getting it the week of Thanksgiving, when I know a lot of folks are out of town. So I wanted to touch base with you now and say, does that meet with what you're wanting to include and propose to the legislature? Or is there something that you would rather do?
Okay, thank you, Lindsay. Are there, are there comments or suggestions by the council? Or is this what you understand, that we want to at least have, you know, be a supportive? Not using it as a particularly one of our legislative asks, but support. Counselor Olson?
Yes, I would, that would be where I think I would prefer to go right now, is not put it on our legislative parties list, but make sure that they know that we're interested in the conversation while we still pursue our options here locally.
Madam Chair.
Counselor Berman.
Could you clarify, Lindsay, what is meant by us being a part of the conversation? I, I'm not sure what the conversation is.
Sure, so the way we have broken down in the handout is our specific asks and then sort of other general county priorities that we support. So of course, things like injured defense funding and those sorts of things, we have three or four. And so it would fall under that category of saying, we recognize that other, you know, law enforcement agencies statewide are looking at the issue of body cams. How do we fund body cams? And also issues pertaining to public records and retention and those sorts of questions that the legislature has addressed. And so all it says is there is, you know, we are also looking into how do we fund and implement a body cam program? And we would appreciate being a part of any conversations. So that's really what it looks like and what, you know, the dialogue looks like with the legislative delegation is to say, hey, if you're hearing about body cam issues, call us, talk to us so that we can be, you know, a part of that conversation.
So we don't know whether there are such conversations or not. So we're really not taking a forward step on it in a way, in that we're not asking that it be something that the legislature takes a look at affirmatively. You know, we're just saying, if something comes up about it, let us know. Am I reading that right?
The legislature is talking about it, there's no doubt about that. They are talking about it, the bill that they passed last year requiring video footage for certain interrogations. Most law enforcement agencies have said that's, that's basically a body cam mandate. They need to have it for certain types of action that they take. And so there are other jurisdictions that have, you know, said, okay, now we have to have it in certain times. So there are legislative conversations going on. Of course, we're going into a supplemental budget year. And so there aren't, you know, I think there aren't any conversations about, well, the state's just going to fund all of this. Even if there was agreement to do so, which there, there, I don't think there is, they wouldn't do it in a 2022 supplemental budget year. So there may be one-time funding that comes out for certain jurisdictions, it's part of a member request, if that's possible. I think it's just a matter of keeping it, making sure that our delegation that may not be a part of it, because the committees that handle body cam issues, not all of our delegation serves on every committee, of course. And so it's just making sure that they're aware of that and they keep us in mind as part of those conversations.
If, if we know of some of the dialogue which is taking place at the legislature on the subject, could we say that we would like to be a part of X, Y, and Z discussions that we understand are ongoing and for you to let us know of others that may come up on the subject? Something that will be a more affirmative involvement? Because I, I think we've heard from our constituents time and time again that they do want our sheriff's deputies to have body and dash cams. It's just how we get them.
Right, and so the legislative, the conversations that happened, there isn't a task force or a work group on this. If there were, that's certainly something that we would already be involved in, but there isn't. These are just casual conversations amongst legislators that are saying, hey, what, you know, we're just talking about this issue. And so that's, it's not a formal discussion with any sort of name or schedule that we would want to be a part of.
That's pretty loose on our part as far as being able to affirmatively get in there, but.
Fairly typical that what we do is say, we know that there are ongoing discussions and it's the same thing really as it pertains to GMA, for example. We don't have any specific priority for what we're asking for with GMA, but we know there are conversations, there are conversations that are happening regarding salmon, there are conversations happening regarding climate change and those impacts and potential bills. Urban density is another one that looks like there's going to be legislation coming forward. December should be, the first Monday in December is when bills start to drop for the upcoming session. And given that it's a short session, quite a few bills tend to drop in December. So we'll have a more concrete idea come the middle of December. And also, once the governor's budgets are released in the middle of December as well. But we know these are happening and what our priority says on the document, and it's again fairly typical, is we know the conversations are happening, we know the bills are coming, please talk to us, keep us in mind. We don't have any requests, but we know that we're going to potentially be on the defensive for some of the requests that may be coming through.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. And then come December, when those bills start to drop, let's have a commitment to recommunicate with them. Because then it sounds like there'll be more specifics.
We do, so what happens is I keep track of all the bills, Josh and Annika keep track of all the bills. We maintain a list of all of that that comes through. And then every single week, what happens during the legislative session, every single week, Josh and I talk to talk about, okay, here are the bills that are coming, would this affect the county, would this not? We put on for council time, anything to discuss if the council wants to take a formal position in a, you know, in support or opposition, we can do that during council time. We also have our calls on Monday with Josh to talk about what's happening, what's coming up in the week. And then every other week, we have a call with our legislative delegation. So the legislature moves fast, there's a lot of conversations that happen during the session and lots of opportunities to weigh in on any bill as it comes up.
Madam? I'm sorry, Lindsay, were you done?
I was done, so go ahead, please.
So Madam Chair, if I could just throw in, and I want to make sure I understand what Karen was trying to get at, whether, Karen, were you asking for a specific bill that we should be sponsoring? Because I, you know, in addition to what Lindsay mentioned, you know, we have membership on the executive committee and we sack, we have steering committee participation as well. And so, you know, we have the opportunity to not only weigh in, but come back to the council to say, hey, here's what other counties are pushing for as well. You know, whether it's sustainable legislation on all fronts, I mean, I'd like to have a broad discussion with our legislative delegation, just to kind of hit on all those broad topics from the record, the Public Records Act, which adds a tremendous amount of cost to the body cam program and is a main driver in most small cities not being able to afford the programming. You know, we have RPA money that we could spend to buy it, maybe there are one-time grants. You know, we missed out on a grant from the Lake Vancouver Police Department was able to obtain one. You know, that doesn't make the program sustainable, but it at least gets the equipment onboard. I mean, we need to hit on all of those topics. I will tell you, I did meet last week and one of the topics with Herrera Butler was, hey, how come we didn't get that grant that VPD did? And the issue was, no one asked. And the answer from the sheriff was, he just didn't know about the opportunity. But there's another grant round starting soon and she'll support money for Clark County for body cams and dash cams. But again, that doesn't make it sustainable, doesn't pay for the entirety of the full-time manning that goes behind all the Records Act and data storage and all that. So I think all of the above and, you know, reaching out to, and I did ask Sheriff Atkins to reach out to all the chiefs to put the issue before each of the cities to document exactly what funding they need so that we will build the record for perhaps going the other route on a ballot measure to seek funding for not only the county, but the cities. I mean, we need to look at all possible avenues for having a sustainable program. And I, I do want to mention Kathleen's work too. I've had those conversations with both Tony and, and Chuck briefly on having a consolidation of our Public Records Act office to drive those costs down, to try to get more efficiencies. I mean, we need to look at every possibility to get this program funding, hopefully without cutting other programs. Thanks, that's, that's all I wanted to kind of update from my foxhole on this subject.
Okay, that's helpful. Um, the last topic that I have is the issue of homelessness and the next step forward with the JAG, with the continuum of care. And so I think that there's a need for council to weigh in on this issue again. What I'm hearing is a request to proceed potentially with a facilitated meeting with the city to talk about next steps as it pertains to the viability of the JAG and also their interest in looking at the continuum of care. I know that there's some interest in going that way. The other alternative I've been hearing is to meet with Council for the Homeless, figure out exactly what a proposal for the continuum of care would look like, and then approach the city and say, this is what we're interested in doing, are you interested in the conversation? It's my understanding from the city that they are, you're certainly willing to engage in a conversation. I don't think there's, you know, there's jumping up and down and saying, yay, we want everything in the proposal for the council for the homeless. Obviously, there wasn't support for it previously, but I think they're willing to engage in a conversation with the county about the proposal for the executive committee structure. So I want to get more kind of firm steps for staff to take so that we say, okay, this is what we're doing next, moving forward.
I appreciate hearing from Counselor Berman and Mevige on this because they've been participating in the JAG thus far, so.
Here's what my view is, and it's slightly different from those two that were just outlined by Lindsay. So number one, there was support by both the county and the city for the Council of the Homeless's work on creating their new executive body. It just fell apart at the last minute and then we took this JAG route. I don't want to meet again with the JAG. And what I do want to do is focus on the proposal that we just heard it again about from Kate Budd. And as, as she couched it, it was a seven-member executive committee. And so I want to focus on that. And what I would like to do is get it in place as soon as possible. So I want to focus on meeting, and I do have a scheduled meeting with the Council for the Homeless leadership to see what updates we need to that proposal. Is, so is that seven members, all voting? Are they the right people? That's what I would like Vanessa's input and Michael's input. And what does it need to look like today in light of the $15 million we're going to spend to try to tackle with this issue? So once we have that identified with the county, hopefully the county, our council will support it and staff and the Council for the Homeless, then I would like to meet and take advantage of a facilitator with the city. I hope to have meetings, continuing meetings with Ty and, and Stober and the mayor to kind of bring along their ideas on what that executive committee should look like. I want to get this executive committee and the MOU behind it as soon as possible. You know, I don't want to, the other little subcomponents, the other groups that we heard about in Kate's briefing, you know, that can take longer, that, and would be primarily the work for the Council for the Homeless and our staff. But it's the executive committee that I, that structure that I want to get right and I want to get in place as soon as we can. So the most direct route to figure out who those people need to be, do they all need to be voting? Can we have just some members that just sit in to advise? In any case, that, that's my view, I'd like to get it moving. And to Karen, I do have a meeting coming up with Kate, who's leaving, and also their president, Adrian, I don't know if it's public or not, but she may be leaving as well. So they're going to have new leadership for the Council for the Homeless. But that shouldn't deviate us from the course in getting the structure set up. So Karen, if you want to go to that meeting, I'm hoping that you could intend or, or any other counselor, obviously we can't have more than two present for these initial meetings.
Yes, thank you, I, I would like to be involved with that. And I'll comment as well on how I see going forward. I, I think it's similar to, and maybe identical, I'm not sure, Counselor Mevige, to what you just said. Number one, we've already agreed to pause the JAG. So that is already done. Number two, get on paper the proposed update and that that would be done by at least the chair and staff, county staff, Vanessa, Kate, others if they wish to be involved, such as Kathleen. Three, get a larger group together to meet with the city and go over that proposal for discussion and edits and decision on whether we, whether they would recommend that to their respective councils. And number four, that the latter meeting would be facilitated, not by the city, but by a person appointed by the foundation. And that's it. So. Go ahead.
What I was going to say is, you know, we talked at length about this the last time we had a meeting. And I guess what came back wasn't quite what we had talked about. And so I think Counselor Berman and Mevige both, just, I mean, Counselor Berman just put it in one, two, three, four, sounds good to me. I, I really think that that's what we need to do in that order. And we are still kind of waiting for the proposed up, update from Vanessa, and I think Kate was going to be involved in that and maybe Kathleen too. But we need this quote unquote structure, something that we asked for. And somehow, if there was a response to that, my understanding is it was misunderstood and came back different than, than what we had asked for. So we're asking for the same thing that we asked for the last time we talked about this. And I'm going to expect that that comes back to us. And we're not going to discuss this again until we get what we asked for in our last meeting and now, today. So I don't, if you have questions, Lindsay, about, again, what that is and can kind of shepherd this through, it would be appreciated.
Yes, yeah, so what I will do, I'll be in touch with the Council for the Homeless. I know that Counselor Mevige, sounds like Counselor Berman are going to meet with them. And then the next step, it'll come back to the council is with the, the proposal that they and staff have agreed to bring forward to the next step.
Great, thank you very much. And that's all I have.
Be, if I may, I think it would be helpful to communicate this with the city of Vancouver because there was a lot of different communication that was being received because of whether things were communicated or not. There was a lot of miscommunication or misunderstandings with the city. So I think we should have a, a clear communication with the city too.
Good. Maybe we should put this in kind of memo form? Is that what you're talking about? Is that what you're talking about, Kathleen? I think it were written and sort of a little one, two, three, four?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that's a bad idea. What I did last week, instead of trying to summarize everything with the city manager, I sent him the link to the conversation and told him where it was, so he could listen to the conversation. But I don't know if all the staff or their council has received that same information, because we were we were receiving information from councillors, the mayor, as well as staff with a communication, are we still meeting? And what is the next step? And what and what our current MOU says as well, because there are some provisions in the MOU that we'll have to have a discussion about.
Okay, well, let's try to put something together then, I guess, so that communication is clear and we understand the direct, everybody understands the direction that we're trying to go. So okay, thank you. I don't see any executive sessions set for today. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. Well, I I think that that concludes our business then for council time. So we are adjourned. Thank you all.